Good afternoon. It is Wednesday, March 2nd. This is the Acton Planning Board meeting for a workshop at the Acton Town Hall. As is the case with our other workshops, there'll be no votes taken, no decisions made. We're just simply working on language. Proposed more articles and any decisions on how those are proceeded on will be made by the Board. The next Planning Board meeting is tomorrow, March 3rd, and there is also a public meeting at that meeting to solicit public input into these proposed more articles. So, so far, John Quah and myself, Bernard Broder, are present. There may be other members who join us, and also the town's code enforcement officer, Jason Sevigny, is here. So I guess we're ready. Jason, I know you told me that a representative from North Star is going to speak with us today, is that right, on the solar wording of the solar energy article?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a phone call and pretty much just have a quick conference call, just so that...I had spoken with him expressing the idea of striking a couple lines from the thing, and he felt that, he felt they were important to stay in there. So I said, "Well, let's just have a conversation." You know, they can explain why they feel that there's, the word was used disconnect.
Yeah.
And/or why you feel that they should, you should leave them in there.
Yeah.
He agreed to. So I told him we'd call him around 4:00 or whatnot.
Oh, okay.
I just, you know, I was just gonna, I just told him 4:00. I didn't know if he wanted to take care of something first.
Okay.
And we can do it whenever. He's available whenever you want.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to get stuff together.
Yep, no, all right. So why don't we go ahead and do some other things and then?
We'll see.
Get to that, yeah. So, any preference, John?
No. My pile had mixed use next, but whatever your pile is. Mixed use, the changes that Ashley sent out.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Were good. For me, there was, I think what she sent, what, earlier in the week or late last week?
Okay.
That one was okay. Had the change, and I think actually Jason might have made them during the meeting, but...
Yeah.
Up top, the structures changed, the definition took out the track the land. And we highlighted there was an administrative thing that's been taken care of in the thing. So, from my review, mixed use is okay.
Okay, now, I just wanna look at the, the chart thing and make sure. So, mixed use not? Yeah, that's right. So it would only, we're proposing it would only be allowed in commercial A and commercial C.
Yes.
Zones and with CEO review.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so that looks to be okay.
I think it's about good to go.
Is, yep.
I got tiny houses next.
Okay.
They did not add the, you know, we needed the...
Oh, wait. Mine, is it, is it blue? The one you're looking at, blue?
This is the one that I had from the last meeting.
Okay, and what needed to be added that you don't see?
This.
This is on the one we just got. The one Ashley just gave me is blue.
Okay, I didn't print that one out. I was looking at it on...
Oh, did you not get Ashley, I'm sorry. There's a pile of new ones that Ashley made.
Are they different from what was emailed?
Yeah, apparently, because like, see, there's tiny houses and it has what you were looking at.
Well, okay. But then why did I just spend an hour going over what you emailed for this meeting?
I don't know. I don't know why they differ. I mean, yeah.
All right, so now I gotta look at this.
Well, actually, it would be a good check with what you did.
Yeah.
Whatever you noted was missing. Now we'll look and make sure it's there. So that's probably a good thing.
Yeah, it's, the chart's still screwed up, though.
Okay.
All right, so we added that.
So tiny houses.
Oh, what we had changed was in Little Osiphe and Shoreland.
Yep.
To comply with what we said for single-family homes, we had to go from ends to ours. And that change...
Right.
Still hasn't been made.
Wait a minute. Oh, we're looking at two different...there we go. Okay, yeah, yeah, sorry. Correct. So N...
All right. And that was the only thing I had on that one.
So that's Shoreland.
Which one are you guys on?
Little, Little Osiphe.
So the next to the last, no, it looks like there are ends to me now.
Yeah, they're not supposed to be ends.
Oh, 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 that's right, they're supposed to be ours. Yeah, we're looking at tiny houses, it's blue. In the, if you want the hard copy, it's on the table to your left. Last time, we talked about that tiny houses would be allowed...
Everywhere, by the houses, right?
Right, yeah, but, but the chart didn't get changed to reflect that.
What's supposed to be an end, what's not supposed to be an end?
Little Osiphe and...
Shoreland.
Shoreland. Should be only one end, and that's the resource protection.
Mine shows one end. Something, it just never, she, okay, she didn't print up a new one, because if you look behind you, I only have one end. I made the changes, but I must not, so I, I probably didn't tell her that the new one on this memory drive was the one to use. Because as you can see, this has, this doesn't have, she went and added the, the zones.
Yeah, which you're supposed to.
Which, right, so we never merged the two together. So this one is correct on the land use chart, but needs to add, she, we need to just add, so...
Okay, but we know how it happened.
Yeah, that's, that's just a miscommunication on, on my part, so...
But we'll need, 'cause tomorrow night's the public meeting.
Oh, I'll have everything done.
Need to have that correct.
Needs change. And I can have her do that change right now, if you wanna actually physically see it.
I'll have her just pull it up here.
Maybe what we can do is go through them all, and then if there are additional changes, then...
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be great to just see it all updated. Okay. Definitions.
Yeah, I think those need change. That was language right out of the state, 14.34.
Yeah, that's right.
Definition.
Five, four, two, three.
Three, just a heck of it. So leave new 514.
Yeah, and it's under 3.2, under definitions.
Uh, that's the definition card.
Oh, okay, yep, and I, I forgot my code today, so... All right, so that's just correct the chart. What do you wanna do next? It looks like we both have...
ADU.
Accessory dwelling units, dwelling units.
Just saying it.
Okay, so that was another one that I, I changed here on the computer. I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah.
So you don't have the appropriate one on that one either.
Yeah, this doesn't have the chart.
Yeah, it didn't.
At all.
What we decided to do, though, here was...
Well, the ADU doesn't need a chart.
No.
That's the definition only.
Well, it didn't need the definition either, so that, we don't really even need...
Well, yes, there's a change in the definition. Accessory dwelling unit, a self-contained dwelling unit located within, comma, attached or detached from a single-family dwelling unit located on the same parcel of land is what it was changed to last week.
That was 14.1.1, wasn't it? I thought we decided that the definition was fine as is, but we needed to change the heading of 514.1, and then 514, 'cause it said additional, and then the language in 514.11 we needed to change, so it didn't just say within the building. I don't have that. That's what we talked about. All right, bear with me.
Yeah, that's totally off.
If you look at 514.11, that title said additional. We're changing that to accessory. So you need to add accessory underlined, leave the additional and line it out. Shaded and striked through, line out per the directions. And then A, if we were trying to figure out the right words to say within or on the lot, you could have one.
Right.
The definition was generic enough that...
The definition was correct, and then what we were changing, A.
A needed to change.
Um, there's a folder over here to Pat, you might wanna take, which has the most current documents.
Which aren't correct either, though.
No, we're going, yeah, there'll be corrections.
It's on top?
I think we talked about, just take a folder, yeah.
So in addition to the title change, Jason, I think we were, my notes, we were talking about within or located on an owner-occupied, uh, single-family...
So I have a self-contained dwelling unit located within, then a comma, attached to or detached from a single-family dwelling unit located on the same parcel of land.
You need to see that.
I have, yeah, located within and attached, attached to or detached from.
But again, you're in the definition. I'd like to just, I don't think we need to change the definition as it exists today. Dwelling unit accessory.
Self-contained dwelling unit located within, attached to or detached from a single-family unit.
Okay, so we don't wanna deal with the definition.
Well, this is what we talked about yesterday. We're, you know, we're revisiting, because this one still isn't, I don't think we're quite there. The dwelling unit accessory says a permanent accessory use to an owner-occupied, one-family dwelling. You could read into that that a detached garage with a, uh, mother-in-law apartment is, you know, a permitted accessory use. And then I think that what we, at least what we talked about at the last one was that paragraph A, 1511A, needs to change to overtly make that clear, that it can be within or...
Or attached, or detached.
Or detached.
So I...
Only one accessory dwelling unit located within A or detached from an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling shall be permitted. How's that sound? Located. Within A...
Within.
Or deta, comma, or detached from. Maybe a comma. Owner-occupied.
Yeah, I will have that change made.
Does that work, Brian?
Can you say it again, please?
Only one accessory dwelling unit located within A or detached from...
Sorry.
Owner-occupied, single-family dwelling shall be permitted.
Isn't there a third option? Within, attached to, or detached from?
Within, I think constitutes detached, attached to.
Yeah, I think attached to.
Okay.
It doesn't talk about detached, and that's the problem Jason runs into.
And obviously, there's certain zoning that still, they have to abide by. But the, um...
Better than six of six numbers.
Could've sworn I just saw those words somewhere.
Uh, you did, probably right here. That's, that was a proposed change.
It's been stricken off.
Yeah, so we're, we're not even using that right now. We're, we're doing away with this page, and we're gonna add it, make a change in the existing ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, that's my opinion. You guys need to weigh in, but I, I think the definition is generic enough in the existing ordinance that, you know, you have to go into the requirements in Chapter 5 and see that, yeah, it's okay to have a detached one.
So is the point of this that only one accessory dwelling unit is allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
Within or detached.
So why not just say only one accessory dwelling unit... Per single-family, whatever, is permitted? Per parcel, per...
Well, that's what we were wrestling with last time. I don't think we...
Only one accessory unit...
Per single... Owner-occupied, single-family dwelling parcel shall be permitted?
It would have to encompass the whole, the whole property, because if you say, "single-family dwelling," then, well, you got a house, and then you got a garage, so you have, it would have to state that on, per, per lots.
Where's, I like, within or...
I do, too.
Attached.
I think we're, I think we're good with that one.
I just think that's overt, and that addresses the issue. It has to comply with the other zoning requirements. So you can only have one. You can't put one in the house and then one over the garage.
Right.
So, the word dwelling is stricken, is what's proposed on this green sheet.
Don't even pay attention to the green sheet. That green sheet can get crumbled up and so on.
So I'll wait until you...
It's probably confusing you more than what you...
Bring the next proposed one up.
Well, look, look here, Brian. This is, this is what I think we need to change. So, A, right, so that's changed, huh? And then this located within A, comma, or detached from an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling shall be permitted.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'll wait for the final one. All right, so, yep. What we're dealing with right now, Pat, are the, what we thought, I'm not saying as a criticism, I'm just to bring you into the loop. Some of what we thought the documents would have been updated from last week to reflect last week's meeting are not, or are not done completely. So we're just like going through to look at a comparison of what we thought we were gonna get today versus what we did. Jason's gonna go down...
But I didn't do it.
And update them, and then bring them back, so that we hopefully will have what we need to give tomorrow night to the full board. So, 'cause you weren't here last week, so you don't really have the context for...
I appreciate it.
When we say, "Well, that's not, that's missing," or, yeah. Okay, so, uh, structure, gold.
I think structure was good.
Yeah, I think structure's...
Let's take a look.
Good, let me just...
I don't even know if we made any changes to it.
Yeah, so that was just adding to make it track with state language, and then taking out the word and, since we did add those other things. Do you have that, Pat?
Yeah.
It's gold.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the shaded underline language is state, state definition of structure, so we're just making this track. So that should be okay. And...
Residential and solar is what we...
Yeah, yeah, we'll do solar last, 'cause we're gonna have a phone conference with North Star on the solar. Okay.
The first thing on this was the, um... The tiny houses above where we had residential unit, also has the wrong, has ends instead of ours in Shoreland and Little Osiphe.
Okay, so that's on the second page.
Right.
Yep.
And then we had added tiny houses to the definition of rental units, residential rental units. In the string, after debating, do we need them or do not need them? We had put, include any dwelling, somewhere in here, comma, tiny house, dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit, residential, dwelling, blah, blah, blah. We had added tiny house, houses to that string.
You have a different color, Jason?
No, I was stuck on something else. I'm trying to figure out why there's an N on my land use chart on something here. I don't feel like it's supposed to be there. Sorry. Huh? Yeah, yeah, I don't know, this is not something I did in-house, and I thought we had changed it all to, everything in the commercial zone was supposed to be permitted, but I have an N in there still somewhere.
I have two commercial zones, I think.
Well, there should be three commercial zones that should be all permitted, and that's including the mixed-use zone, but right now I still have an N on commercial B.
That is what we discussed.
That's what we discussed, that's what we had left it.
You wanted it not permitted in the commercial B?
Yeah.
I don't know why that is. That is what was discussed.
Okay, I, I was just curious why.
How does that zone differ from the other two commercials?
I think that's why we did it, to make it...
I know, I honestly, I'm not sure right now. If that was, if you guys had that discussion, and that was what...
Oh, yeah, that's definitely what we discussed.
Okay.
I don't remember the basis, but...
No.
What is B? Commercial B is the pink. That's down by, uh, the boat ramp, uh, right on the line, gravel pit area. That's something I really...
So is it, is it in industrial?
Oh, that's over on, uh, Horn Pond and...
There we go.
And Wilson.
Yeah. By the boat ramp on Horn.
Yeah.
The only thing I know that's down there are pits.
Um, it's actually outs, that pit is outside of that zone. I'm looking, uh, the pit is, if you look at my mouse, is right here. You have the Monarch Pit.
No, I meant the other one that's, that's on, that's the other side of the road. It's right after the entrance. Uh, I mean, right after you come over the, the state line and left.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I'm just...
It has three buildings. Three small buildings. And you can only see it in the wintertime.
Yeah.
The tree, the leaves are off.
Okay.
That, that does appear to be on that side of the road. It doesn't even appear to be on both sides of the road.
Right.
Mixed use, um...
That's the only B that I can see on the...
I'm gonna suggest that for now, I, I put a question mark, YN, and then we can ask, revisit it when Gavin's here, because otherwise, we're not gonna know why. We're just gonna spin around on why.
Yeah, and just looking at some of the other things where there are several areas that, uh, commercial A and C are okay, and commercial B isn't. Again, I couldn't tell you the rationale.
Yeah.
But there's quite a few of those. So...
Okay.
Well, Gavin might be...
So, Jason, because you were looking at that, did you get that we talked about tiny house on the blue residential rental units?
I missed what was the last thing what you said, John?
There are ends where there should be ours.
The first thing is the land use chart. We've added tiny houses, but the, that row is not what we added. There are ends in, uh, Shoreland and Little Osiphe, and these should be ours.
Yeah, I'll make that change. I'll make the change right now.
The third from the end and...
The second.
Second from the end should be ours. Okay, and then it's...
All right.
So, yeah, then the next thing I had was the definition, residential rental units definition. We had inserted tiny houses into the string of different kinds of dwellings.
Okay, well, she just never uploaded this. I did it, I already made that change on this. She had never, must not have been uploaded, so...
So which page was the right one? In the definition? String of things?
Yeah.
Block 30?
No, we haven't got there yet. We're on, uh, the definitions, residential rental units. Include any dwelling, dwelling unit, accessory dwelling, blah, blah, blah. In that string, we put, comma, tiny houses.
Include any tiny house, comma, dwelling, comma, dwelling unit, accessory, yeah. Yeah, I, I made the changes when we were doing this last week, but then I don't think I told her that I actually made the change.
Okay.
So, I just noted that I did, that we need to print up the correct ones.
And then we didn't, I'm not sure we ever came to a resolution, but at one point, we were saying at the end of that definition, uh, intended to be occupied by any person or persons not legally related, um...
Yeah, I don't think we even came to, I left it blank, because we'd never actually decide, I don't think we decided on anything.
Jason was concerned about not related by blood, 'cause there are many instances where you can be legally related, and that would be, you know, like a foster kid. What happened here? So I don't know what the right answer is, yeah.
Do you follow us on that one? Pat?
I don't know what page you're on.
We are, um...
I compared you that.
If you see the, um, the residential, residential rental units?
Yes.
Okay, the, if you read that, that little description or, or...
Definition.
Definition, at the end of it, it talks...
Not related by blood or marriage.
Blood or marriage, but people are related in other instances, adoption, um, other things like that. So I was more of less, I didn't, I wanted to be more PC than anything. Do you see where I work, where I was coming from? Or do you think it's fine?
Operator to be occupied or intended to be occupied.
About not related legally.
Well, that leaves you open for anybody saying that, hey, I'm related to you, you know.
Well, but legally, you know, there has to be, you've got adoption papers, you've got foster papers, you've got a marriage license.
Social Security number.
Okay, so I, I was thinking about this one before I came over. So, Jason, did you, do you find just the word "blood," period, to be objectionable? 'Cause there is-
It, it, it's not objectionable, I just didn't know if it was appropriate.
Okay. I mean, there is a word under the law, I think it's pronounced "consanguinity," and-
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have people-
What's that?
I don't want people to have to look up in the definition what this word is.
Right, okay. Well, that's what's used, um, under the definition of family for protection orders. So, what I would suggest is maybe this, um, intended to be occupied by, and I don't know why we have any person or persons, I would just say, or intended to be occupied by persons not related by blood, marriage, or other relationship recognized under main law. And that takes in domestic partners are recognized under main law, foster children, adopted children.
Can you say it again?
Persons not related by blood, marriage, or other relationship recognized under main law. Now, arguably, I mean, I did think of this, you could just say occupied by persons not related by relationship recognized under main law, because that would include blood relatives, marital, and so forth. That would be less wordy.
Yeah. Less words.
Pat, what do you think?
One word would not suffice? Just legally?
Oh, instead of, well-
Instead of the, instead of, you really-
Well, recognized legally-
Probably should-
Where, though, you know?
Well, just the way that you said. That's where you probably should do it, but if you wanna make it less wordy, then-
Yeah, I mean-
Just use the word legally.
Yeah, but whose law? If somebody says, "Well, I'm from Istanbul, and it's recognized there," versus main law. That's just my thought.
But you could take out the string if we said by persons legally related under main law. Less words.
And you can take out blood, marriage.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Persons-
Too much crossing out now.
Tended to be occupied by persons-
Persons legally.
Persons-
Related.
Related.
Legally.
By main law?
Yeah, 'cause that covers everybody.
Main law or state law, does it?
Yeah, no, we want it to be main law, recognized by any persons.
That's a negative, so you have to leave the "not" in.
Sorry.
So, or intended to be occupied by any persons legally, not legally related under main law, period.
By any persons.
Did you say not legally? I don't want that.
No, no, any, not-
By any persons.
Well, yeah, I did, because what was, this is saying family's okay.
Right.
So if you say, um, intended to be occupied by persons legally related, that, then it doesn't follow. Then you're saying, you're charging, you can charge, or-
That's why it says any person, guys.
All right, let me include any dwelling-
It makes not work.
Spaces rented. Intended to be occupied by persons. Okay, what about this? Intended to be occupied, any dwelling, dwelling, da-da-da-da-da, which spaces rented out or offered to be rented out by the owner or operator, to be occupied or intended to be occupied by persons not related to the owner under main law. Okay. That's simple.
So persons not-
Intended to be occupied by persons not related to the owner under main law.
Under main state law. There you go. All right.
Okay.
Does that look what you want up there? Is that, will that suffice to be printed up?
I don't think you need the word "stay," but- I'm just, the "stay." Would it suffice to just put by any person, and then parentheses "s"? And then also- Okay, there was, under 5.30, there was some commas we took out last week, and you did take them out on there, but it should-
Should be all saved.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing I saw there that didn't change was you had, uh, inserted in D, at least one operational fire extinguisher, shall be-
There, just didn't get.
I didn't, I didn't tell her I changed this, so I don't think she, she put this on the new.
Okay.
That was, that was just communication, lack of.
That was all I had.
Okay, now what did we?
Mary.
Mixed use, hi. I'm a little, I guess when we find out why the "n" for commercial B as to mixed use, I'd just be interested, 'cause we are saying you can have residential rental units in commercial use B. So, we'll see once we get Gavin's word on it.
Yeah, I, I can't remember. It was, he had some rationale.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm not seeing anything else wrong with that. Oh, um, had tiny house.
Yeah.
Where was that? Did we already do that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Scroll back up. Jason, you scroll up, you put tiny houses in the definition, right?
Yeah.
For rentals.
I did, it is, right there. Include any tiny house.
Okay.
So, so-
I can take that phone call now if that's where we're at.
Yeah, we're in.
Solar. Before you call him, let's just talk about it first so we understand.
Yep.
And Pat wasn't here.
Definitely.
So before you get onto the solar, you've already done the mixed use?
We did. Was there something, we thought that was okay, except for the question about that "n" instead of an "r" for commercial B. Did you have another concern?
I am having a hard time wrapping my head around just playing devil's advocate and going through the town and the businesses that are in town right now, unless I'm just not understanding it. The word, um, limited to residential office, under the mixed-
Building or structure, yeah.
Definition.
Right.
So I'm just going around town, you know, there's a list of businesses in town that you can get at their office, and everybody works out of their home. Contractors, um, painters, electricians, carpenters, and then there are a number of other, why don't we just start there? So under this definition, in, in a rural area, it's not allowed. They can't have an office.
Are you looking at the pink page?
Home occupations are allowed in any, in-
Yeah, that's different. Home occupation is different from what we're talking about.
Yeah.
What generated this as a concern was somebody that owned commercial property, and there was no demand for it to develop commercially, wanted to use it for basically what, like-
Renting apartments.
Apartments, so a non, right. So that's what generated this, so we're just trying to-
So that's-
Open up commercial to be a mixed use, not to affect anything about home businesses or anything that-
Because I think that people might interpret it this, that way, that's-
Well, I'm assuming that both at the, the public hearing tomorrow, and there'll be another one in May, and the town meeting, that we would explain what we're, what the objective is.
Yeah, home occupations are defined, right?
Yeah.
And so now we're defining mixed use as you see it, separate definition from home occupations.
It's that word "office."
'Cause there's already a mixed-use zone, right?
Yeah.
And so this is defining a mixed-use structure.
Right.
So that somebody that owns commercial property could have a store with apartments up above it, or, you know, a-
I understand it's in the commercial zone, but most of the businesses in town, because most of, there's very little commercial, most of it's rural.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we were trying to push these things. I remember having the conversation with Gavin here at the table.
So where is it that you think, you're suggesting someone should be able to have a mixed-use structure that this doesn't allow?
Do they have it now?
They have home occupation.
But in their home occupation, is that a mixed-use structure?
No.
No. You're allowed a home occupation.
The building.
Occupation. You're using part of your home for your occupation.
Yeah. I mean, what you're constructing, if you have a single-family home, you have to have your two acres of land or whatever, and what you're permitted to build is a single-family home, and then you're permitted to use it, you could have a home office or whatever. But you can't build a mixed-use commercial structure on a residential lot, because you can only build a single-family dwelling.
So, right now, Pat, you have, home occupation is in the land use chart, under section G. Let me zoom in a little bit more. Uh, and then it even goes into, home occupation is defined, it even has it in the commercial use.
Where, where are you, Jason?
I'm in the zoning, I'm on, geez, I'm jumping all over the place right now. There's page 22, has a definition for it in the, it touches on it with the commercial use of what you're trying to talk about. And then on page, page 26, there is an actual home occupation. This term shall mean an occupation or profession which is customarily conducted on or in a residential structure or property in which is, one, clearly incidental to and compatible with the residential, residential use of the property and surrounding residential uses, and two, which employs no more than one, no more than two persons, oh wait, which employs no more than two persons other than family members residing in the home. It goes on, if you, if you look at my screen right here, there's a bunch of stuff about home occupation, um, so I think it'll take it away, take us back to, that's why we're dealing with a mixed-use one right now.
Right, and we're not messing with anything in the, the other zones.
No more questions?
What's up?
You don't look like you're buying it.
I've been trying to wrap my head around it, just by playing devil's advocate and looking at what we have now, and, and how this wording might be interpreted by someone.
But I, in the, in the example you used, and maybe I'm missing it, I, I think we can point to other parts of the ordinance.
If you look at, if you look at my screen right here, too, you have J, which is professional and business services, having, you know, 25 square feet or more of gross floor area, does not include home occupation. And then below it, child daycare as a home occupation. I think that-
The other one was recreational facilities. I was thinking of a recent applicant who wants to build a home and have another-
I had already talked to him about possibly even, I had talked, I don't know if we're talking about this. Yeah, I had talked to him about having, um- Yeah, I had talked to him about having, I think it's one we had a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had talked to him. He might have to possibly split that property so that he has his commercial side.
That's what I'm thinking of. That's just specifically the one that I went to when I was looking at it.
I was telling him more for legal issues.
Yeah, it's not...it's not...
Rural, it's not allowed, the mixed structure that he wants to put up.
Well, the structure...
You can do a recreational thing in rural.
But you can't here. It says...
Mixed use. If you wanted to just do a recreational facility, we wouldn't do that. On page 13, you're gonna do a recreation facility, park, playground, golf course, driving range, and blah, blah, blah. You can do that. Do that in rural with a site plan review.
So, does that match up with what we have on this chart?
Yeah, because you can't do this in rural. You can't do mixed use in rural. It's a singular use. We're gonna make a golf course on this one.
But he doesn't want to. He wants to live there.
Well, that's...let's not talk what he's doing because that application isn't even set yet.
I'm just using that.
Yeah, I've already had conversations about what he might have to do with his property. He's just trying...so, that...the house is just an afterthought right now. I mean, he's looking...that person is looking more for this first, and then down the road, he might build there. And I had already told him that maybe he might want to think about dividing the land so that he has, you know, his commercial side and then it's one entity, and then his residential is on a completely different lot. He wasn't doing a gift store attached to his house. But that's...yeah, that's besides the point. That's down the road. If he doesn't meet the criteria, then he doesn't meet the criteria. That's his problem, not...
All right. So, on solar, so that we can get this phone call in, what was it that we were talking about deleting?
Five N D, five twenty-nine.
C and D on five twenty-nine, too.
So, page two.
There are other...do you want to go through it for the other stuff, though, too, before that? I mean, there are other things.
Well, I'm thinking unless those other things involve North Star.
Well, if we have the copy and can make the changes, then...
I can't make the changes. I haven't gotten a Word document. I only got PDF documents. So, before he made the changes, we were just gonna have discussions with him. And then if you guys decided to move forward with the change, I also have to include the chairman, too, with the conversation before, which, you know, I just have to let him know what the intentions are, why, because he's not able to be here today, so...
Okay. So, I didn't realize that we need to tell him, North Star, of any changes, so...
I don't know why we couldn't just get a Word document.
Because it's his work. He doesn't want, you know, he doesn't want to put in the legwork and then someone take over, I guess. And I'm not, you know, whatever.
All right.
I don't, you know, I had asked for one.
Yep, let's just do it.
Here's my...let me just run through what I...because there are two new things we didn't talk about last time.
Okay.
The first new thing is it starts with the definitions at 3.2, and it's out of order. So, we need to start with the land use chart, 2.7, and the changes we're making there, and then slide definitions underneath because it's physically out of order.
All right, so definitions is gonna go under?
Yeah, it's gonna start with the land use chart. And then if you go to the land use chart, they've got this hokey essential services up here on the uses. That's gonna come out of there, and then we have to put the, like we do for all the others, we put 2.76 underneath that on top of the actual uses we're gonna include.
So, get rid of essential services, take this, drop it down.
Yeah, so you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You get that gray area that...yeah.
You probably can't see it from there. I'm just sticking my paper up in the air.
And then on the actual chart, 276 E and F, we had talked about saying, for E and F, so there wasn't confusion, we would say non-solar renewable energy to stop both of those.
What page are you on, John?
Well, eighteen is where it is on...oh, the second page.
The second page, right.
So, the existing...this is one of Gavin's issues. The existing chart talks about renewable energy, and now we're adding GH and I.
Right.
What we wanted to do was say non-solar in front of those.
Yeah, I remember that.
So, that should be on the grid.
All right.
So, again, just some...we'll talk about E and F, I mean, C and D. We had talked about adding a private road in 229.3, sub-paragraph B4. Slide D on the next page. Five twenty-nine, three, B4. Plans including blah, blah, blah. Location of any public, private, or private road or right-of-way. We're adding private road in there.
That's right. Location of... So, including location of private road?
Location of any public road, comma, private road, comma, or right-of-way that is contiguous with the property.
Oh, down there, I'm sorry. Location of any public road, comma, private road. Comma, or right-of-way.
That was it. I mean, we gotta fix that beginning and then the, you know, fix the chart, and then we could hear why...why C and D they think should remain in. Our issue, Pat, on five twenty-nine, two, C and D, where it says roof-mounted and then ground-mounted. Roof mount, not subject to site plan review, and that agrees with solar system accessory because that's what we're talking about here, accessory systems. So, that agrees. But when you go to D, a ground-mounted accessory is subject to uses other than single or two-family dwellings is subject to site plan review. So, that doesn't agree with the chart. And so, somehow, if they want this to remain in, if we believe that, then somehow that has to be reflected in the chart up above. At least that's what I think.
Can you review that again, D?
So, C and...
Number?
C, five twenty-nine, two.
Yeah.
C and D. We had at our last meeting said, well, let's just take them out because they're already CEO review, not subject to site plan review, so why do we need them? There was some discussion about having a ground-mounted panel along the pond, but if it's at your house, others does say other than single-family dwellings. Well, if you had a lot. But the point remains, based on what they say, that I don't think this chart, A, G, accessory solar systems, agrees with what five twenty-nine, two, D is saying. We would have to almost add another line for that very specific, not a house, not a two-family house, ground-mounted, you gotta have site plan.
Want to make that call?
If they're ready.
I know, in two seconds.
Wait, 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 hang on. Are you ready to talk to them? Are you ready?
He's just gonna explain why he feels, you know, you got...John, or anybody will explain why they think they should just have it taken out, and he's gonna explain why he feels it should be.
Well, I would let him explain, I would say, because you already told him we want it out, and he wants it in, so that he can explain.
I'm switching on speakerphone so that...
Their use of time.
You can have some conversation about the section of the solar panel that we were talking about, five point two-nine point two, C and D. So, I got you on speakerphone right now, and I'll let you guys have some conversation.
Yeah. Who are we speaking with?
This is Keith, but that sounds like Bernard.
Hi, Keith. Yeah, this is Bernard. So, John Qua is here and Pat Pearson for board members. And so, I understand Jason already talked to you after last week's workshop and said that we were considering removing C and D of five point two-nine, two.
Right.
And that...okay, so, we understand that you think those should remain in, so can you just explain what your concerns are?
Well, I wanted to be sure at first that the board understood, so, you know, kind of what the...because there's a strange distinction that's made, and it's certainly not illustrated in the land use table. The land use table is a very, sort of, simple way of looking at these things, so there's, you know, there's always sort of an exception, or there's another nuance to the rule. So, when we're talking about accessory solar system, there's a difference between roof-mounted and ground-mounted.
Correct.
And that's part of what's in C and D. And there's even a further distinction drawn between single-family uses and two-family uses, and then other for ground-mounted. So, if we take that out, I just want the board to be clear that any ground or roof-mounted accessory use for solar, an accessory use is defined pretty specifically, or not specifically, it's defined kind of generally. Any ground, any accessory use solar is just going to go for CEO review, and it will not be site planned. So, for example, consider a situation where you might have a larger commercial user or a larger multi-family building, and they can have a pretty sizable portion of, you know, their property taken up with, you know, ground-mounted solar that there wouldn't be site plan review for that. So, I don't have a problem with that if that's the way that the board wants to go. Based on some of the other conversations I have and the level of control that I think the board wanted to have over other proposed solar problems, it just seems a little bit of...it seems a little bit uncharacteristic given the conversation that I was a part of, but I don't know that they understand the impact of that and how that would take that, you know, site plan review aspect of it out of play if they were to just leave it at all accessory uses or CEO review. That was really my only concern. I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that, and if they didn't, the board understands that and want to just leave all essential uses to CEO review, then that's fine, we could absolutely do it that way.
Keith, let me ask you this. It's the definition hinges on it's being used for its own electricity. And so, by definition, doesn't that limit how big it's gonna be? I mean, even if you got a warehouse, you know, you're not gonna have an acre of ground-mounted for a warehouse. I'm asking, I don't know.
True, but I think it will because you have to be using it on site. But I think it's, I think, for example, I have to go back to a project that I was a part of because that's just what I remember the best. So, we were working on solar for a brewery in Preport, and, you know, we're talking about a single facility that was production, you know, they wanted to use a lot of accessory produced power to power the entire facility so that it includes, you know, everything, but also included a big portion of warehouse, and it required the entire roof of a, I want to give you a thirty thousand square foot building, and two large ground-mounted solar things. If they had a ground mount all of that, for example, you'd probably be talking about...I don't know. I'd need to guess, but I don't...it might have been a half an acre of, you know, of solar. So, again, that's a big, big use. You know, consider a, something that's harder than that, but it's all residential units. They're gonna be much more intensive power users than a warehouse. And if they wanted to try to put a, put ground-mounted solar panels on site with that apartment building, you know, then that would take up a sizable portion of the property. And again, it's CEO review, you know, Jason's gonna have to look at it in terms of, you know, how much property they're allowed to utilize and what the rules are for where to locate solar panels and all that. But all that, all the aspects of site plan review that the board has to look at are things like, you know, can we deal with the board or just can we change characteristics? And a lot of the stuff that we talked about in our last meeting would, you wouldn't necessarily have a chance to do that as a board to have those discussions and to take public feedback on it. So, again, I'm fine with it. I'm, you know, I'm not saying it's something you can't do. I just want to make sure the board understands that.
How do we make the chart reflect what you're saying? I mean, my initial problem was administrative, that we get to, we go down that paragraph, we get to D, ground-mounted accessory, okay, some of that site plan review, you go up to the land use chart, and it's not reflected. Would we not have to do something different in the land use chart?
I think you would. I'm not used to working with land use charts because I think you're running into this problem where they're a little bit too simple because sometimes the language makes things a little bit more complicated. But I assume that you could do something like an asterisk, you know, for accessory use, and then, you know, something, you know, or footnote below it that does explain, like, you know, difference between ground-mounted and roof-mounted are further detailed below in section five point two-nine point two, B and D. Or, you know, you could have subcategories underneath in the land use chart underneath G, next to one row, one of them says ground-mounted, roof-mounted, but even then, you know, there's a difference between single and two-family versus multi-family commercial uses for that. So, yeah, it's gonna be...you have to kind of mess up the, we can order the chart a bit, I agree.
Why can't it just say R, comma, S? And then when you read what section you're trying to deal with, then you know whether it's an R or an S. I mean, when you read five point two-nine point two, you know that you're dealing with a site review. When you read about your residential one, it's not gonna say that a site review is required. So, you know it's either or.
Yeah, I think that could work, too. I would just say, however you want to do it, it should be consistent throughout the land use chart if you're...I don't know if there is another situation off this morning.
We have footnotes in...we do have footnotes on another section.
Yeah, I agree, it should be consistent.
It's the...it's for additional AD...it's the...
Well, I think the policy is the larger concern than how we work into the chart. I mean, I agree, it's got to be in the chart, but...
You know, while I don't think what Keith describes is an issue we're gonna run up against in any time near future, I'm sensitive to the fact that we should have policy that addresses it. And we, we do say, single and families are not, are okay, single and two-family are okay, it's just if it isn't, other uses. And I kind of like, I mean, I'm persuaded that we should have policy that gives us the, the right to look at those harder.
So, what if it just had Rs with an asterisk, and then under the chart, there was an asterisk that said...
Ground-mounted, what D says, the asterisk would say that.
Well, we have right here, and if you look behind you on the land use chart, I have a, R, R4 is reserved, so something got struck in out of there, so it could say R4, and then go on to...
Oh, under footnotes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that would help.
Okay.
So, I think, I think what I hear you saying is that the idea of distinguishing between, so, different types of uses, uh, within accessory, that some of them shouldn't be site planned review, and some of them can be CEO review, is a good policy decision?
Right.
And that's another one thing I wanted to make sure that, that the board was clear already, that, you know, we're okay with it just all being CEO review, or that...
Right.
That is important, so, um, that's the first part, it sounds like that position is that, um, leave the language in that, that C and D, because you've got this distinction in place?
Correct, as a, yeah, as a draft, because we can't, we're not making any decisions, we have to go back to the full board, but that would be what we will recommend, so that's the way the draft should read, yes. And also, Keith, on 5.29.2D, ground-mounted accessory solar energy generation system accessories to uses other than single and two-family dwellings are subject. I think we talked last week about taking out two-family and just saying, uh, multiple family dwellings, because it may be more than two, for example. Or was the intent that if somebody built a four-unit structure, that, that it would be subject to site plan review?
Yeah, I think the language is saying that accessories and uses anything more than a single or two-family dwelling.
Okay, yeah, and now, yeah, now that we've said that, that makes sense.
Okay, so, for chart purposes, then, we, so, I think we're agreed to recommend now to leave that in, and then we would make, uh, G, R4s across the board, or are there some of these commercial lots, resource protection, where you can't build, um, something other than a single-family home? Or a two-family dwelling?
Well, keep in mind, like, if you know, for any uses in any of those districts, a roof-mounted solar, it is going to be in law.
Right, that's why it's R4. Everything's an R unless you go back and see, if you're doing ground-mounted for something other than a single or a two-family home, you've got to get a site plan review.
Right.
So, that's my question, is the way to address that, R4s all the way across the board?
What are you saying, R4?
Well, well, we're going to add a def, we're going to add a sub, a footnote.
They're just going to put an asterisk, R asterisk.
No, no. No, they actually put a number.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay, because it pertains to that particular one.
If you look at the chart, they all...
Okay, yeah, I would say, just to be safe, just do R4 across...
And then you, you, I review it, and if the scope of the project justifies site plan review, then, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Um, under 5.29.3, item B4, Keith, plans, including, uh, one, two, the third sentence down, location of any public road, if you would then put, comma, private road, comma, or right-of-way. So, if you'd add private road to that line.
Sure.
And then John had some...
Then, then there's just some administrative stuff. Um, Keith, we need to start this with, you know, just make it in chronological order, so the change, the proposed amendment should start with 2.7, and we put the, the land use chart in, and then it's followed by 3.2 definitions, and then it's followed by 529.
Oh, I got you, yes, I do, Keith, thanks, yes, that makes sense.
And then, in addition to now making, uh, the R, it R4, E and F on the existing 2.76, um, essential services, addressed renewable energy systems. And since we already have that in, the easiest way to draw a distinction, if you, if, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but E and F, which is above G, obviously, start with renewable energy, installed on, renewable, renewable energy installed on a non-existing structure. What we wanted to do was add the words non-solar in front of both of those categories, since we now have solar specifically called out.
Right. I'm just calling this up really quickly, yes, okay, I see it, renewable energy installed on an existing structure, renewable energy installed on an existing structure, so you want to add non-solar?
Correct, because then G and H and I will address solar specifically.
Those need to be highlighted and...
Yeah, yeah, and then, the change, the, the new words have to be highlighted and underlined.
Let me check one of the English reports, because though, the best term is, um... It's fine, I, that is, okay. How do we say, it's the term renewable energy system, or something like that, with the rules defined, we also want to make sure we keep that, that, that mission, that I can, can be worth it.
It's a good check. Yeah, it's not in there. And the last administrative thing, Keith, um, is in the land use chart that you have, you have 2.76, kind of up in the upper left-hand corner, that needs to go under the actual zones in a separate gray box, just like all the other changes we make. Does that make sense? So, there's a gray box, it says essential services, uh, all the way across, right underneath the village, and the transition, and the rural, and the commercials.
He, like he did in the mixed use, he can reference his mixed-use one.
Yeah, just like you did in the mixed use.
Oh, did I do that right once, and then messed it up sometime?
Yeah, it's just kind of extraneous, hiding up there in the upper left-hand corner, it needs to be a separate line under the, under the zones.
Oh, I see, yep, okay, that's, that's, you can change.
Okay.
Gotcha.
And you know, I presume you know we have a public meeting tomorrow night, so we need to have a final draft form for that?
Yep, no, that's fine, I can, I can make these changes, and, uh, as soon as they hang up the phone, make sure I get this done, and then write it with Jason.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Anything else, anybody?
Um, what do we want R4 to actually say, is there something, language that we want to...
Oh, yeah.
Did it really say?
Yeah, we should...
What do we want what to say?
The actual footnote.
R4.
Oh, oh.
That's a good, good thing.
Hello?
Yep, we're still here, can you hear us?
Sorry, um, I have one other question, so, before, uh, a couple of questions before I go, the language of the footnote that I'm...
Yep, that's what we just...
We're just talking about that.
Okay, good.
We don't have it yet.
Standby one.
Can it just say what was in C and D, or not?
Yeah.
Um, well, I don't think you want to add, just like copy and paste C and D into the asterisk, but I was thinking something that would say, um, it can be as simple as just saying C section 5.29.2.
Oh, yeah, yeah, great, right, yes.
Because it's...
C and D, yep.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah, yeah, I lost track of what we were, yeah, the, the asterisk in the chart will refer them...
Right.
...to the notation, and then the notation will tell them exactly in the ordinance where they need to look.
Right, so it'll be, it's not an asterisk, though, it's R4 across the board, and then back in the notes on page 19, there's, 4 is reserved, so we're going to line out reserved, and put C-section 5.29.2 C and D.
What page did you say that was, page?
19.
19, okay.
Yeah, it's all...
R4, reserved, gotcha, yep, I see it.
So, just in, in your, just administratively, you've got to have a line out through reserved, and then add the new words.
So, I just wanted to reiterate, um, the last time we had a town meeting, Keith, um, it's really important that we check and recheck what is shaded, and what is shaded and underlined. Um, we had a problem with that, and we couldn't vote.
Yeah, so, uh, so, I noticed that something that has come up in comments before, is it a problem that, or is it just, everything that's listed is 5.29 solar energy systems, this is all obviously brand-new language, we're revising something, we're adding a whole new section, um, is that going to be underst, I assume that that's just understood, I don't know if the planning board knows that, but should we, um, underline and highlight the, all of that language, just to indicate, that seems a bit much, for my, it's, it's harder to read that way, but should we do that to indicate that this is all entirely new language?
Yes, I know it's, it's ridiculous, but, um, we had at least one change last year not approved because of that.
Just as long as he follows this.
Yeah, as long as you follow the, what's up above, the rules on the front of the page, so that's why I say you've got to shade and strike through reserved, right, because that's going out, and then all the new words have to be shaded and underlined.
Yep.
All right.
Unfortunately.
Well, we're shading and underlining the whole thing, then, below 5.29, because that's all, that's all we can...
Yep, that's a good catch.
Okay.
All good?
What else?
Um, was...
Rotating.
This one takes juice.
Mix juice was okay, we thought, okay.
I guess that's it, Keith.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Are you all set?
Let me double-check, hold on just one second. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, on the land use chart, sections E and F for that, where it says renewable, um, should we phrase that as, hold on, I just lost it, there it is, should we phrase that, we can change that to say, non-solar renewable energy installed on an existing structure, or it could say, renewable energy installed on an existing structure, parentheses, non-solar.
Same thing.
Yeah, Mark's next to me. Tomato, tomato.
Yeah, tomato, tomato, I feel the same way, but I just wanted to, um, at least raise the question, um...
Be easier to change it, if you just put it in parentheses, you can just add it.
Yeah, that's true, it's just, okay, yeah, Pat was saying it'd probably be easier to just do the non-solar in parentheses after.
Yep, so all he has to do is type it in, change anything.
The typing aspect of it, so...
Okay, I can do it that, I can definitely do it that way.
Okay.
Does that term, I, I just did a quick search, I can search through the ordinance by word, and, um, I didn't find that those, that term, renewable, um...
The definition.
Yeah, I know it's not in the definitions, but I, I didn't find it, that term used anywhere else in the ordinance at all, which is good, because I don't want to accidentally cause confusion by saying, well, in the table, it says non-solar, but down here, it's not distinguished, so it must mean all renewable energy, but am I correct in that? Does anybody, is anybody aware of a, a section in the ordinance where renewable energy, um, installations are discussed or addressed, because I would want to go in and make that edit as well, to say non-solar?
To my knowledge, memory, bad as it is, is no. Um, the solar forum that I did while I was here, the only thing we could rely on was E and F.
It's all I have, is E and F, I just did a quick search.
I don't think there's anything else in there, which is why we're very interested in getting something for, um, solar in on, in on the, the, uh, the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I can't find, I'm doing a word search through the document, and I don't, the entire zone ordinance, and I don't find it anywhere, so, I assume that that's correct. All right, well, I think that's really all I have.
Okay.
All right.
I will get right on this, and Jason, I will make sure you have one, uh, in your inbox by the end of the day.
Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you, thank you for all your work on this, you guys did great.
All right, thanks.
Okay, talk to you soon.
Yep. Um, Jason, you had a call from Julie?
Yeah, my wife.
Okay, you know that?
Probably saying, when are you coming home? I'm sorry, I can't, I hung up on her on my watch.
I, oh, you did, okay, I was going to say...
I was like, oh, they don't need to see that.
I can attest that, um...
I actually, I'm, I'm actually glad about that phone call, because, I think...
I got a lot, a lot accomplished on that one.
Well, from a policy perspective, I don't think it's going to come into play, but you never know.
Right, no, I, I see what you're saying, because we haven't, we're not there, we're not a Freeport, like, he was using, he used that as an example, but, down the road, you never know how this place gets built up, especially with all this, you know, the change of going, going on around here the last couple of years, so...
I mean, at the last select board meeting, there was mention of the Acton Mall, so...
The Acton Mall?
Yes, yeah, somebody had a question about the...
All of America.
...SWAC shack at the transfer station.
Oh, oh.
I said, when's, when's the Acton Mall going to be reopened? And she, the board didn't, wasn't familiar with that term, like, Acton Mall. So, okay, so, do we want to wait and have Jason print off the revisions, or deal with it tomorrow?
Up to you, I'm not here tomorrow, so...
I'm not going to be here tomorrow?
You're not going, you guys aren't going to be at the meeting tomorrow?
I'm not.
Okay, well, I'm going to suggest that we take a brief break, then, if you want to go and update and print, because otherwise...
I'll do that right now.
...with a set of eyes here, and, um, that would be good.
It's always smart.
Better than me trying to explain it all tomorrow night.
All right, so, close this all out, so...
Okay, so, can we, um, go off-record and then come back on?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, what time is it, please?
4:30, exactly.
It's 4:30, and we're going to go off-record, so the CEO can print up revised documents, and then we'll reconvene, thanks.
Magically appeared again.
So, it's about 4:45, and we're back, um, reconvening our planning board workshop. Uh, Jason just brought up revised drafts for us to look at.
Which one do you want to do for us?
Oh, um, accessory dwelling units, is that okay?
Yep. Yep. I can't find the one I just worked on, but that's okay.
I would, I understand. So is that, after the word within, and, and then A, so within, should it just be within or detached from, so the word, the letter A and comma don't belong there, is that right?
Okay, within.
Hey, I'm just doing what you guys had me do.
Yeah, no.
So just strike, so just have it, or detached, within?
Within or detached from, an owner occupied.
So the A and the comma come out, and then with that, everybody okay?
Yeah, I, I don't know, it's a new, well, I would've just lined, left 5.11 in, you know, no change, lined through additional, uh, underlined accessory, and left dwelling units alone.
I, I can do that, that's, that's...
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So only additional accessory will be struck through and highlighted, cuz the others aren't changing. It's a nit, but...
Yep.
So then we're taking out E and A.
Right here, Ben.
That'll be good.
He's combining these two.
Yeah, instead of having two separate lines.
See, this is what it says right now, instead of having two lines...
Yep.
Just have the paragraph, normal, additional, underlined, or lined through, accessory, highlighted and underlined, and then dwelling units doesn't change. They stay just regular print, cuz it's not changing.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, instead of two, last two lines, I think that's probably...
All right, I'm gonna say, let's do tiny houses, cuz hopefully that, I think rental is the most cumbersome.
Rental, I might have missed that.
So we'll do tiny houses, and what was it that we needed to change on this?
Uh, just the zoning chart, um, I had made some changes, and it just ever got transferred over, so...
So all ours except one N.
Correct.
And...
You think that was it, right?
Well, that was it on the residential, too.
Okay, so that should be okay.
Oh, you know what? It's not it, I made changes in this, uh, let me look, hold on a second, make sure that I gave her the right one. Uh, residential.
You talking tiny houses?
Yeah, I'll be back, more paper.
What do you change in tiny?
So, I, so, she has them stored in multiple documents, and I, when I made corrections, I used a different one than she did, that she was using, so now it doesn't reflect, uh, include, uh, any tiny home that's not in the definition now.
Are you talking rental or tiny homes?
Oh, I'm talking rental.
Okay.
I'm still in tiny. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm looking ahead, uh, because...
Oh, I see, yeah.
You know, uh, I had made some changes on the document, but then she went and, yeah, because the land use chart was on one and not the other, and...
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, K, needs to be updated, yep.
It was updated, huh?
Um, no, yeah, you're right, that is, that should be okay.
I think he's saying in the definition, tiny houses.
But was tiny house in the land use chart before?
No.
Okay, well then shouldn't it, it needs to be highlighted and underlined all the way across, okay?
Yeah, I, I guess, I mean, I guess it depends on how these things are taken, you know, we could, if it is...
Well, I'd rather do it than have someone's, yeah, I mean, why?
Okay.
When in doubt, do it, I would say.
So somebody will say, why do you have tiny houses highlighted when you're talking about rentals?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, because...
Because that's what the new chart's going to look...
Although, yeah, because arguably...
That's what the new chart's gonna look like, it's gonna, it is a change.
Yeah.
It doesn't ref...
Doesn't exist now, and if...
No, I think it's probably safer to do it, to highlight it.
Okay.
And Mary was in here checking on us, you know, Mary will pick up on that.
Yeah.
Right, Mary? She's sharp.
Well, I do wonder what will, well, yeah, if tiny house... was not approved, then residential units is actually K and not L.
Oh, we could do a reserved, we could argue you didn't, you didn't approve it, so we'll just make K reserved.
Mm-hmm, so residential would still be L.
Yeah.
And then it would just be...
Yeah.
I mean, the tiny house thing, it's the state law.
Yeah, I don't think that, I think the problem one will be L, you know, the one that may have issues.
But you went with maximum occupancy of each rental unit shall be defined by the Acton Fire Department?
That's what's being proposed.
Did he, did anybody make the telephone call?
Jason has spoken with the chief, yeah, and he said he's...
I didn't hear what the feedback was.
Uh, that just happened, so that's why you haven't heard it, but yes, he said he was agreeable to doing that.
Yes, doesn't have the operational fire extinguisher, the tiny house...
Oh, he didn't update the...
He used the bottom, and the bottom, the blood thing.
Right.
This didn't make, he didn't get the changes in it.
Okay. None of it is done.
No.
The fire extinguisher isn't done.
Yeah, so this is gonna be next.
Not related to the owner of the main law, is what we're changing that, too, and tiny houses, and operational, those three changes. And then we'll tell him to go down and highlight tiny houses.
Oh, that, yeah, he could do that by tomorrow, but, um, so what is, the, the relationship issue, the fire extinguisher, operational...
And tiny houses and...
And tiny houses.
In the definition.
Should the, under H, maximum occupancy shall be defined by the Acton Fire Department or determined?
It's all in all these pages, you notice, and now we have different copies going around the calendar, so they come in and can't, you can copy, they didn't copy.
What's the nuance on the difference?
I wanna hear what the chief had to say, everything I've tried to look up on it, it is quite a bit of litigation, it's been, having children, more, two kids, it's a bit of...
He's gonna be looking at it from a safety perspective, so, yes, he figured it was too hard to divine it by the solar, which is what we're concerned, well, concerned about both, but, the way to get it...
Please, uh, still, she wasn't that one, well, I did, we just made the changes, you'll see them on this page, I still have to, I gotta clean up that dish that she gave me, I got too many word documents, so...
Yeah, and then we gotta really make sure, once the ones we nail down, those, we don't get a wrong one printed out to give them for the warranty.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm gonna be working on now, cuz, um, as you can see, there's too much confusion on it.
So before you leave, something else, this is what we're gonna talk about, right, we have tiny houses, used to be shaded.
Uh, we were going, I'm sorry, we didn't...
Yeah, we did, but I think upon further review, it's probably safer than to do.
You don't have to do it for right now.
Yeah, you don't need to do it now, but it's probably gonna have to be done.
Okay, um, so under H...
Operational, three houses.
Shall be, I think the word determines better than defined, um, but I'm more concerned now, I think it should be by the Act, by the Acton Fire Department Chief, not just department, because I think it needs to be one person, so it's consistent and it's clear who that person is, because otherwise it gets even more arbitrary. Just my opinion, but...
What, so when you talk to him, he was all right with that? And he, is he all right with him personally doing it? Would he delegate?
No, he would do it, he would be the one, or he, or he and I, whatever it takes, but I got to talk to him and ask him if he felt comfortable, um, and if there was some kind of math that they do, that he deals with, he says there is, so...
Okay, so you think he'd be all right if we put chief specifically, the Acton Fire Department Chief?
Maybe ask him in advance of next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, he might have not an issue, but then you go and switch chiefs, and then you've got an issue.
Well, yeah, does Acton have a volunteer fire department?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, my concern is, is not just because it's volunteer, but it's increased by it being volunteer, you know, the chief isn't in, and someone comes in, and they're adamant, you know, I absolutely, it has to be done right now, and you've got somebody...
Say, no, it does not have to be done right now, we'll get to it when we get to it, you want us to put a schedule, we have a schedule book in here, there you go.
Yeah, well, there you go, could also translate, if it's not specific, that it's the chief, to the chief's not there, you have a young inexperienced firefighter who thinks that he or she can...
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put in the fire department's policy inside, they're gonna, we're gonna, it's, I don't need to outline stuff like that, they're not gonna put out a rookie out there to, to...
I want it to say chief, that's my vote, uh, but we can vote tomorrow, I...
Right?
Yeah, I, I don't want to change...
I don't think it should be anybody, any volunteer.
No, I don't think they would allow that in the first place, you know, but I understand where you're coming from, Bernard, I just don't...
Or at minimum, his designee, so that the chief has to approve someone to do that, but you also then, unless the chief develops criteria, then it's really arbitrary, one person goes out and says, you can have six people, and someone else says you can have four, if it's the same person doing it, it's gonna be consistent, but...
I'm not arguing.
All right.
I'm just trying to think, is there another, do we have two pay, is there a deputy? Do we have two paid positions?
I don't, I don't think there's, well, no, there's paid, there's paid people on the, we have full-time firefighters and EMTs and stuff like that, um, and a chief, and then there's volunteers as well, and those volunteers get paid, but...
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I, I, well, let's just go with chief.
All right, any other?
I don't, you know, if you wanna make defined determine, that, that, it doesn't bother me, that's a little bit, if you think that's a better descriptor.
I think it is.
All right, well, I think, I think we're in good shape.
That is set, so it's, what, halfway, five o'clock, I can't see. Jason, can you see what time that clock says?
Five o'clock, exactly.
Okay, it's 5:00 PM, and we are, woo-hoo, a journey, thank you.